Good evening. I'm Robert Floyd, your Southampton Town Moderator, and welcome to our 2020 Town Moderator Special Town Meeting Article Session. I will read all the articles for our upcoming special town meeting Saturday, October 17, 10:00 a.m. at Labree Field. We met this morning, the committee, and I'm thrilled we're going to basically have the same template that we did for our successful annual town meeting there in August. Right now, I'm sitting in a room with our deputy moderator Carl Keener and our town administrator Ed Gibson. Earlier this morning, the committee met Ian Hollingsworth, Police Chief, John Workman, Fire Department Chief, John Martin, Select Board, Ed Gibson, Carl Keener, and also Randall Kemp, head of the Highway Department, and myself, and we made a few tweaks what had worked so successfully. I will read you our summary, which will be posted on the town website. Southampton Special Town Meeting Notice, Saturday, October 17, 2020. The Southampton Special Town Meeting will be held on Saturday, October 17, 2020, outside at Labree Field, located on Strong Road, Southampton, and will be located inside the Ball Diamond, beginning at 10:00 a.m. If there is inclement weather, the special town meeting will be postponed by 6:00 a.m. on the 17th, and the rain date will be the next Saturday, October 24, 2020, beginning at 10:00 a.m. also. Notification will be sent out of a weather postponement via Code Red Telephone System, Town Website, and social media. So the check-in for you voters will begin at 9:00 a.m. Only registered voters will be allowed inside the fence then Ball Diamond for this town meeting. Chairs will be provided for voters, got about 120, and will be set up beforehand. Please, no need to bring your own. Social distancing will be practiced at this special town meeting. Yes, we are in a pandemic. Personal chairs will not be allowed to be used during COVID-19, due to COVID-19 concerns. Voters without masks, you're right, will be required to sit in a separate area. This is a precautionary measure due to COVID-19 and those other bleachers, metal bleachers outside of the fence. Non-registered voters will be allowed to sit in the bleachers outside the fenced-in area. This is a precautionary measure due to COVID-19. Fire EMS will be present. There will be reserved parking for handicapped individuals. The EMS will, there will be an ambulance there. There will be reserved seating up front for handicapped individuals. There will be reserved seating for town officials. The town meeting will be broadcast on FM. For anyone who is hard of hearing, please bring radios and headset if so desired. Porta-potties will be available for use. All safety and health precautions have been taken for the health of Southampton voters and residents and all those involved with the special town meeting. Please contact 413-529-0106 should you have any questions. So we're going to proceed. I thank you again for your support, and it's a pleasure and an honor to serve you, the residents and voters of Southampton. Article One, PEG Access Broadcast Equipment for the Town. To see if the town will vote to transfer appropriate $50,000 from Public, Educational, and Government PEG Access Capital Fund to the town's PEG access designee, East Hampton Media, to fund the replacement, upgrade, and installation of the PEG TV broadcasting, streaming, and recording equipment at the Town Hall First Floor Meeting Room and Norris Elementary School Library or take any other action relative thereto. I will, I will share some of the usual comments I offer at the beginning of each town meeting. Since we are in a pandemic, I will keep it brief during the meeting, but I will read most of them here, so we don't need to go over them at the meeting. Our special town meeting will be recorded for rebroadcast by East Hampton Media on Public Cable Access Channel 191. The moderator's rules, not the town council's legal opinion, apply, or a town meeting is in progress. Article Two, Funding for the Ford F-550 or Equivalent Highway Plow Dump Truck. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $140,000 to purchase a new Ford F-550 or Equivalent Dump Truck with plow and sander body for the Highway Department and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow the sum of $140,000 for said appropriation under applicable sections of Chapter 44, Sections 7 and 8 of the General Laws or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, provided, however, that the appropriation authorized hereunder shall be contingent on the approval by the voters of the town of a so-called Proposition Two and a Half Dead Exclusion under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for that purpose as authorized by General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7/Chapter 9, or any other general or special law in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs. And the amount authorized to be borrowed for such projects shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied that may be necessary for that purpose as authorized by General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7/Second, 9, or any other general or special law or take any other action relative thereto. Your moderator permits commercial TV cameras, a privilege, not a right, if and only if they agree to remain outside the gate and in a designated area. We're not having a designated area for this meeting. There's plenty of room for the media to, to roam. The essence, the necessary ingredients of a town meeting only require the presence of our town clerk, town moderator, a properly executed warrant with return of service, and in Southampton, a quorum of 50 voters in accordance with our Select Board being granted, oh, this was words that we had for the, the annual, so we won't go there, but we have 50. We had special permission at that time from the Commonwealth in Boston to vote to lower, and we did, to 25, but that does not apply for this special town meeting. We will need a quorum of 50. Article Three, Funding for Replacement Security System at Edwards Library. To see if the town will vote to transfer $5,800 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the Edwards Library Capital Budget to fund the replacement and expansion of the security system at the library or take any other action relative thereto. The Duties of a Moderator. My role as your town moderator is to facilitate, provide an open process that voters trust, and administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner, fully, impartially, consistently, regardless of who you are, not to assure any particular outcome. I ensure those who wish to address this town meeting have opportunity, and the integrity of our town meeting stays as intact as possible. Both sides' need will be heard on each and every article. The moderator's authority is over process, not outcome. I leave the outcome to you, the fully informed voters. Procedures, accomplish things instead of manipulating town meeting proceedings. Article Four, Funding for a Wide Format Scanner for the Building Department. To see if the town will vote to transfer $7,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the Building Department Capital Budget to fund the purchase and installation of a wide format scanner or take any other action relative thereto. I help every dedicated voter as I serve the town, so your inexperience holds you back. Please allow me to walk through the process during the actual special town meeting. Anyone may challenge my process with a point of order yelled from your seat. I will invite you to a microphone where you then describe what pending action is frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper procedures. Any attempt to misuse it as a device to usurp the floor will be dealt with formally. The Duties of Voters. Your responsibility by the, is the legislative branch of our town government for the Southampton Special Town Meeting Articles. You have power to make laws, the power of the purse, and to exercise your freedom of speech. Speaking and participating at a town meeting is a right, but like all rights, it needs not be abused nor denied. Article Five, Funding for Replacement of Six Desktop PCs. To see if the town will vote to transfer $7,600 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the Town Hall IT Capital Budget to fund the purchase and installation of six PCs and software and operating systems or take any other action relative thereto. The Ground Rules, Courtesies, Guidelines. Important to set them early, then stick with them. Town meeting is a legislature subject to his own rules within the Commonwealth laws. It needs rules, one of my duties as your moderator. Why? Simple efficiency is important, so the business of the meeting can be accomplished more accurately with fewer errors and less wastes of time. And we're in a pandemic, so we're, we're not wanting to look forward to having anything more than an hour. Certainly legally, we can continue beyond that one hour, but we want all of this ahead of time so that we can have an efficient town meeting. So more importantly, the protection of the rights of individuals against illegal encroachment, unattentional, or otherwise. Article Six, Transfer Funding for Election Registration Wages. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $3,500 to the Election Registration Wage Account. Said sums shall be taken from these accounts. $2,000 from PEG Programming Account Line, $500 from Certification Stipend Account Line, $500 from Select Board Minutes Account Line, and $500 from the Building Department Gas and Plumbing Expense Account Line, or take any other action relative thereto. Our town meetings are conducted in accordance with Commonwealth General Laws, our bylaws, traditional customs, and practices we have followed for many years with guidance by the principles and rules of conduct in town meeting time, a handbook of parliamentary law. It's an organic process as our customs or traditions and our practices do evolve. The morning of the special town meeting, we proceed with what we have since 1773, when town meeting named our then-village Southampton. Town meeting works if you want it to work, not for you alone, but for the whole community. Once a motion is read, and I've asked and received the second, then I invite a pro and then a con statement, and then we open up for discussion and questions and answers. Article Seven, Funding for Park Commission to Construct Two New Pickleball Courts in Conant Park. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $115,000 from Community, $115,000 from Community Preservation Funds to the Park Commission for the construction of two new pickleball courts in Conant Park. Said funds to be transferred from Community Preservation Surcharges Undesignated Account or to take any other action relative thereto. Our pre-appointed counters, when needed, will count a section as a pair, then compare counts. When they do not agree, an account resumes. For a complete and accurate count to be announced out loud so all can hear, they count from front to back. All discussions must be relevant to a motion under a warrant article and within the scope of each article before its merits or lack thereof for the motion. I always allow you to speak your minds, speak your heart and mind, not read what others have written. This ties the moderator's hands to maintain an open, balanced town meeting that is fair to all. It interferes with the moderator in the execution of town meeting duties. It is when after a comment is ruled out of order or scope, the speaker continues to debate the moderator, that's when the speaker is directed to sit down. I don't use a gavel, which certainly may drive the point more dramatically. I do not want drama. I will not allow a voter to take a town meeting hostage. Article Eight, Wetlands Protection Bylaw. To see if the town will adopt the following Wetlands Protection Bylaw. I'll read the contents, and then our deputy moderator Carl Keener will take over for the rest of the article. Contents. One, Preface. Two, Purpose. Three, Definitions. Four, Jurisdiction. Four, One, Resource Areas. Four, Two, Buffer Zones. Four, Three, Conservation Zone. Four, Three. One, Local Streams Intermittent. Four, Three. Two, Rivers, Perennial Streams. Manhattan River as an example. Four, Three. Three, Vernal Pools. Four, Three. Four, Isolated Wetlands. Five, A Application for Permits. Five, One, Commission Quorum. Five, Two, Time Frames for Submission of Documentation. Five, Three, Request for Determination of Applicability. RDA, WPA, Form One. Five, Four, Notice of Intent. NOI, WPA, Form Three. Five, Five, Notice of Intent. NOI, Permit. Six, Exemptions and Exceptions. Seven, Extensions. Eight, Certificate of Compliance. WPA, Form Eight B. Nine, Filing Fees. Ten, Regulations. Eleven, Consultation, Peer Review. Twelve, Enforcement. WPA, Form Nine. Thirteen, Security. Fourteen, Burden of Proof. Fifteen, Waivers. Sixteen, Appeals. Seventeen, Servability. Eighteen, Relation, Relation to the Wetlands Protection Act. Nineteen, Effective Date. Twenty, Associate Members of the, of the Commission. Carl?
Okay. If I need to refer to numbers on these paragraphs, I don't have them in this copy, so.
Oh, here.
Hopefully, everybody can hear me. I'm starting with number one, Preface. The Wetlands Protection Bylaw, hereinafter referred to as bylaw, is promulgated by the Town of Southampton Conservation Commission, hereinafter the Commission pursuant to the authority granted by the Town of Southampton. The Wetlands Protection Bylaw was adopted to protect additional resource areas with additional standards and procedures augmented those of the Wetland Protection Act, MGL, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 131, Section 40, and Regulations Thereunder, 310 CMR, Court of Massachusetts Regulations 10. Two, Purpose. The purpose of this bylaw is to aid in the consistent and effective implementation of Wetland Protection Act, MGL, Chapter 131, Section 40, by way of further definition. The bylaw is to maintain the quality of the surface water, the quality and level of groundwater table, water recharge areas for existing or potential water supplies, to protect public health, safety, and to protect persons and property against hazards of flood, water inundation, and to provide for reasonable protection and conservation of certain irreplaceable natural features, resources, and amenities for the benefit and welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Southampton. Accordingly, this bylaw protects the wetlands, water resources, and adjoining land areas in the Town of Southampton by providing prior review and control of activities deemed by the Commission to have significant or cumulative detrimental effect upon the following resource area values. These values collectively, as the resource area values protected by this bylaw include, but are not limited to: One, Protection of Public Water Supply. Two, Protection of Groundwater. Three, Flood Control. Four, Erosion and Sedimentation Control. Five, Storm Damage Prevention. Six, Prevention of Water Pollution. Seven, Protection of Fisheries and Wildlife Habitat and Rare Species Habitat, including rare plant species. Recreation, I'm sorry, eight, Recreation, Agriculture, and Aquaculture. Section Three, Definitions. Except as otherwise provided by this bylaw, the definition of terms in this bylaw shall be as set forth in the Wetlands Protection Act, which terms are used herein, shall include provisions of MGL, Chapter 131, Section 40, and in 310 CMR 10. Resource Area. Any freshwater wetlands, marshes, wet meadows, bogs, swamps, lakes, ponds, rivers, streams, creeks, banks, beaches, vernal pools, isolated wetlands, lands underwater bodies, land subject to flooding or inundation by groundwater or surface waters. Riverfront area as stated in Wetlands Protection Act, MGL, Chapter 131, Section 40, and in Regulation 310 CMR 10.58, Section Two. Alter. Includes the following actions, without limitation, when undertaken to, upon, within, or affecting resource area values protected by this bylaw. One, Removal. Excavation or dredging of soil, sand, gravel, or aggregate materials of any kind. Two, Changing of pre-existing drainage characteristics, flushing characteristics, sedimentations, patterns, flow patterns, or flood retention characteristics. Three, Drainage or Other Disturbances of Water Level or Water Table. Four, Dumping, Discharging, or Filling with any material which may degrade water quality. Five, Placing of Fill or Removal Material Which Would Change Elevation. Six, Driving of Piles, Erection, or Expansion of Buildings or Structures of Any Kind. Seven, Dredging or Filling of Land Underwater Bodies. Eight, Placing of Obstructions or Objects in Water or Waterways. Nine, Destruction of Plant Life, including Cutting of Trees. Ten, Changing Water Temperature, Biochemical, Oxygen Demand, or Other Physical, Biological, or Chemical Characteristics of Any Waters. Eleven, Any Activities, Changes, or Other Work Which May Cause or Tend to Contribute to Pollution of Any Body of Water or Groundwater, including, without limitation, any activity that may cause surface water runoff, contaminated with sediments, chemicals, or animal wastes. Twelve, Application of Pesticides or Herbicides. Thirteen, Storage of Flood Waters and Storm Water Runoff Waters. Fourteen, Incremental Activities That Have or May Have Cumulative Adverse Impact on the Resource Area Values Protected by This Bylaw. Resource Areas. 4.1, Resource Areas. Except as permitted by Commission or as provided by the bylaw, no person shall commence to remove, fill, dredge, build upon, degrade, discharge into, or otherwise alter any resource areas or conservation zone. 4.2, Buffer Zones. Any activity proposed or undertaken within 100 feet of a resource area shall be referred to as a buffer zone and shall be subject to regulation under this bylaw. Buffer zones are vital in protecting the resource area of the bylaw in many ways, including, but not limited to: One, Slowing Water Flow, thereby decreasing water velocities, allowing infiltration, providing flood control, and reducing the erosion potential of storm water runoff. Two, Trapping Sediment and Other Insoluble Pollutants, thereby decreasing or preventing pollution of the wetlands and water bodies. Three, Reducing Nutrient Overloading by Filtering Nutrients Bound to Sediment Surface Flow and Removing Nutrients from Groundwater Through Uptake in Vegetation. Four, Providing Permeable Soils That Contribute to Groundwater Recharge. Five, Producing Leaf Litter and Biomass Which Increases the Humus Content of the Soil and Increases in Absorption and Infiltration. Six, Scattering Sunlight and Providing Shade, thereby lowering water temperatures within the wetland and the water bodies. Seven, Providing Essential Habitat for Wetland Associated Species. Eight, Providing a Visual Separation Between Wetlands and Developed Environments. Lands within a buffer zone are deemed by the Commission to be important to the protection of these resource areas. Activities undertaken in close proximity to the resource areas have a higher likelihood than those activities distanced from the resource areas of adverse impact upon the resource areas, either immediately or as a consequence of construction or over time as a consequence of daily operation or existence of activities. These adverse impacts from construction and use can include, without limitation, erosion, siltation, loss of groundwater, degraded, poor water quality, and loss of wildlife habitat. 4.3, Conservation Zone. Land within a buffer zone is deemed by the Conservation Commission to be significant to wildlife, public and private water supply, and to the prevention of pollution. The natural vegetation, plant communities, and indigenous soils provide important shelter, nesting, feeding, and migratory areas for wildlife associated with the adjacent wetlands. Forested upland vegetation provides an important buffer that maintains air temperatures, light regimes, and habitat quality within the resource area. These areas provide key function in the attenuation and uptake of pollutions that would otherwise be discharged to water bodies or wetlands. These areas act as filters which prevent erosion and decrease the non-point source loading of contaminant that may alter the water quality of wetlands and other surface waters. Any activity that disturbs the vegetation and/or soil which occurs within the buffer zone is likely to result in the alteration of the wetland through siltation, overgrading, or deposition of construction debris. Based on this information, the Conservation Commission shall require that a 25-foot-wide strip of undisturbed vegetation within buffer zone, called the conservation zone, be maintained adjacent to any resource area but not include in lands subject to flooding or the 200-foot riverfront area. No work structures or alterations will be allowed within the conservation zone unless permitted by the Commission. unless permitted by the commission, except for minor activities such as mowing, gardening, pruning within existing lawn, garden, or landscaped areas currently occurring at the time of the adoption of this bylaw. Insert adoption date here, date. The conservation zone shall not apply to the artificially-created stormwater management structures such as detention and retention basins, artificially-lined ponds, and construction wastewater treatment lagoons. The conservation zone for vernal pools will be based on the size of the basin with a 25-foot setback of undisturbed vegetation for vernal pools, less than 10,000 square feet, and a 50-foot setback of undisturbed vegetation for vernal pools, 10,000 square feet or greater in size. Where the — excuse me. Where the conservation zone is already altered in such a manner that the presumed protection offered by the buffer zone is not being met, the commission may issue an order of conditions for a project, provided that it finds that the proposed activities will not increase adverse effects, adverse impacts on that specific portion of the conservation zone or associated resource areas, and that there is no technically feasible alternative. In such cases, the commission may modify the scope and detail of the — oh, excuse me — proposed project to minimize impact on or improve protection of the values protected by the bylaw. 4.3.1. Local Stream Intermittent. A local stream is defined as any ditch, channel, swale, or naturally-occurring depression that conveys any type of water for 30 or more days within a calendar year. Local streams are important for storm damage prevention, flood control, groundwater protection, wildlife habitat, and recreation values. During the spring, summer, and fall, these streams disperse snowmelt, storm runoff, across landscape thereby preventing dangerous volumes and flows from spilling over roadways and property. This broad dispersal also allows for larger volumes of water to infiltrate into the ground, recharging groundwater supplies. Local streams are an essential source of food, water for wildlife when they're often the only source of water in higher elevations in town. During all seasons, but especially in winter and spring, local streams act as essential corridors for animal movement, especially when food is scarce. Accordingly, this bylaw protects local streams, their associated bordering vegetation wetlands, if present, and the adjacent buffer zone within 100 feet of the bank of those streams. 4.3.2. Rivers, Perennial Streams. For the purpose of the bylaw, the protection — that — the protections afforded to the riverfront areas under the 1996 Amendment to the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act shall extend the reach of jurisdictions 200 feet from the mean annual high water line, MAHWL, of a stream or river as specified by the Act. 4.3.3. Vernal Pools. Vernal pools are temporary pools of water that provide habitat for distinctive plants, animals, and animals. They are considered to be a distinctive type of wetland, usually devoid of fish, and thus allow the safe development of natal amphibian and insect species unable to withstand the competition of predation by fish. The commission shall presume that all areas meeting the definition of vernal pools of this bylaw and the adjacent upland area perform essential habitat functions. This presumption may be overcome only by the presentation of credible evidence, which in the judgment of the commission demonstrates that the basin or depression does not provide essential vernal pool habitat functions. Any formal evaluation should be performed by an individual meeting the qualifications under the Wildlife Habitat Section of the Wetlands Protection Act Regulations. 4.3.4. Isolated Wetlands. Isolated wetlands are areas of wetland vegetation which are subject to flooding and consist of isolated depressions or closed basins which serve as ponding area for runoff or high groundwater. Such areas must be at least 400 square feet in area and may include kettle holes and bogs. 5. Application for Permits. Within 100 feet horizontally outward from the edge of a resource area, 200 feet horizontally outward from a mean annual high water line, MAHWL, of a perennial stream, any activity proposed or undertaken which, in the judgment of the commission, alters any area subject to protection under the bylaw is subject to regulation under the bylaws and require the filing of a notice of intent, NOI. If the application is in any doubt as to whether an activity is subject to regulation, a request for determination of applicability, RDA, should be filed. 5.1. Commission Quorum. More than half the members of the commission in office must be present to conduct business and to hold a public meeting. 5.2. Timeframes for Submission of Documentation. All documentation, including plans, maps, tables, charts, consultant reports, et cetera, to be considered by the commission for permit filing must be submitted to the commission no later than two weeks before the commission meeting date. The commission meets once or twice a month. Dates are subject to change. Meeting agendas are posted in the town hall. An administrative review will be conducted upon submission, which includes fees, plans, documents, maps, wetlands delineation data, drainage studies required for the submission. Administration review will last up to five days. Only after said review has determined that the application is complete will the public hearing date be scheduled and a public notice be issued. The commission shall have 21 days to hold a public hearing from the date a completed application is received. How you doing? The commission, in an appropriate case, may combine its hearing under this bylaw with the hearing conducted under the Wetlands Protection Act, MGL C 131, Section 40, and Regulations 310 CMR 10. The commission shall have the authority to continue the hearing to a date certain announced at the hearing for reasons stated at the hearing, which may include receipt of additional information offered by the applicant deemed necessary by the commission in its discretion or comments and recommendations of other town boards and officials, as appropriate. Excuse me. In the event the applicant objects to a continuance or postponement, the hearing shall be closed and the commission shall take action on such information as is available. 5.3. Request for Determination of Applicability, RDA, WPA, Form 1. The purpose of the request for determination of applicability, RDA, is to allow the commission to determine whether a project will alter or change a resource area, and if this is the case, a notice of intent, NOI, will have to be filed. The RDA shall be submitted on WPA Form 1 and shall include such additional information and plans as are deemed reasonably necessary by the commission. 5.4. A Notice of Intent, NOI, WPA, Form 3. Any person who proposes to do work that will remove, fill, dredge, build upon, or alter any resource area shall submit a notice of intent consisting of application materials required under the Notice of Intent, MGL Chapter 131, Section 40, and 310 CMR 10. The NOI shall be submitted on a WPA Form 3 and shall include such additional information and plans as are deemed reasonably necessary by the commission. 5.5. Notice of Intent Permit. Excuse me. Within 21 days of the close of the public hearing, the commission shall issue a permit approving the project or deny approval of the project. The written decision shall be signed by more than half of the commissioners in office. The signed permit will be issued by certified mail or hand-delivered to the applicant or the applicant's representative. If the project is approved, the commission shall impose conditions as are necessary for the protection and the interest of the bylaw. Before work can be — before work can commence on the project, A. The Order of Conditions has become final and then recorded in the Registry of Deeds of Hampshire County or the Land Court within the chain of title of the affected property. A copy of such filing shall be sent to the commission, including the book, the page, or document reference number. The applicant is — excuse me. The applicant is responsible for such recording of the Order of Conditions. B. A pre-construction site visit shall be conducted with the application or representative builder and the commission members to review all orders of conditions, including inspection and approval of all erosion control measures. If work commences before the above conditions are met, an enforcement order may be issued by the commission. Any change made or intended to be made in the plans shall require the applicant to file an amended notice of intent or to inquire in writing of the commission whether the change is so substantial as to require a new filing. Applicants shall not proceed with any changes until the commission issues its written approval. Under the bylaw, a permit shall prohibit any work or portion thereof that cannot be conditioned to protect said interests. If the permit is denied, it shall be for one of the following reasons: for failure to meet the requirements of the bylaw; 2. For failure to provide necessary information and plans requested by the commission; 3. For failure to avoid or prevent unaccepted or cumulative effects upon the resource area values protected by the bylaw; 4. Where no conditions are adequate to safeguard the resource area values protected by the bylaw. A permit shall be valid for three years. 6. Exemptions and Exceptions. The application and permit required by this bylaw should not be required for maintaining, repairing, remodeling, but not substantially changing or enlarging an existing and lawfully-located single-family residential structure or customary appurtenance thereto as long as the footprint of any proposed additional is not any closer to the wetland or any other resource area than the existing structure, and there is no reasonable alternative location on the owner's property for the new structure that is further from resource areas as determined by the commission. The commission may issue a generic or ongoing permit for maintaining, repairing, or replacing an existing and lawfully-located structure or facility used in the service of the public to provide electric, gas, water, telephone, telegraph, or other telecommunications services, storm drainage, and sewer, provided that the structure or facility is not substantially changed or enlarged as determined by the commission and provided that written application has been given to the — excuse me. — to the commission prior to commencement of work and provided that the work performs, conforms to performance standards and design specifications adopted by the commission. These standards and specifications shall conform to the best management practices in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This ongoing permit may apply to other institutions in town with facilities and structures for normal maintenance activities within the buffer zone as determined by the commission. Examples included but are not limited to educational institutions, fire districts, golf courses, spraying for aquatic plant management and residential — excuse me. — and residential requirement, retirement communities. The application and permit required by this bylaw shall not apply to emergency projects necessary for the protection of the health — better pick it up.
Okay. The application and permit required by this bylaw shall not apply to emergency projects necessary for the protection of the health or safety of the public provided that the work is to be performed by or has been ordered to be performed by an agency of the Commonwealth or a political subdivision thereof, provided that advance notice, oral or written, has been given to the commission prior to commencement of work or within 24 hours after commencement of the emergency project and provided that the work is performed only for the time and place certified by the commission for the limited purposes necessary to abate the emergency. Upon failure to meet these and other requirements of the commission, the commission may, after a notice and public hearing, revoke or modify an emergency project approval and order restoration and mitigation measures. You got Carl on the — The application and permit required by this bylaw shall not be required for work performed for normal maintenance or improvement of land which is lawfully land in agricultural use as defined in the Wetlands Protection Act Regulations 310 CMR 10.04 at the time the work takes place. Exceptions clearly stated in the Wetlands Protection Act and regulations thereunder are not extinguished by the bylaw. 7. Extensions. The commission can extend a permit twice for an additional one-year period. Requests for extensions shall be made in writing to the commission with the filing fee, see filing fee section, at least 30 days prior to the expiration of the permit. The extension permit shall be recorded in the Registry of Deeds of Hampshire County or the Land Court. A copy of such filing shall be sent to the commission, including the book and page or document reference number. The applicant is responsible for recording of such extension permit. If work commences without the applicant so recording the extension permit an enforcement order may be issued by the commission. If the applicant does not request an extension for their project at the end of the three-year period of the orders of condition, any work on the project must stop until a new notice of intent has been filed with the commission and a new order of conditions duly issued and recorded. 8. Certificate of Compliance, WPA Form 8B. Upon completion of the work described herein, the applicant shall submit a written request for a certificate of compliance, WPA Form 8A. The Commission shall act upon the request within 21 business days. For projects completed according to plans stamped and signed by a professional engineer or other registered professional, the request must include written indication—usually in the form of a letter—from such professional that the work was completed in compliance with the permit and to explain any deviations—if any—as built plans are to be submitted if the project has changed from the original project plans. Prior to the issue of the certificate of compliance, a site visit by the Commission is to be made in the presence of the applicant or a representative of the applicant. If the Commission finds that all general and specific conditions have been met and the project has proceeded according to the approved plans, a certificate of compliance is issued. If the Commission determines after review and inspection that the work has not been done in compliance with the permit, it may refuse to issue a certificate of compliance. A partial certificate of compliance can be issued for a portion of the project as long as all work and mitigation for that portion has been completed. If the permit contains conditions which continue past the completion of work, such as maintenance or monitoring, the certificate of compliance shall certify which—if any—of such conditions shall continue. The certificate shall also specify to what portions of the work it applies—if it does not apply to all the work regulated by the permit. The certificate of compliance, including any continuing conditions, will be recorded by the applicant in the Registry of Deeds or the Land Court of Hampshire County within the chain of title of the affected property. A copy of such filing shall be sent to the Commission, including the book and page or document reference number. The applicant is responsible for recording of such certificate of compliance. Nine, Filing Fees. The following pertain to the filing fees: One, any person filing an application for a request of determination of applicability, RDA, or a notice of intent, NOI, pursuant to the bylaw shall, at the same time, pay a filing fee in accordance with the filing fee schedule. Two, filing fees should be made payable to the Town of Southampton. Three, the filing fee does not include the cost of the public legal notice in the local newspaper. Four, all recording costs at the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds or the Land Court are the responsibility of the applicant. Five, applicant shall agree in writing to pay the reasonable fees, costs, and expenses of any expert consultant deemed necessary by the Commission. Six, Town of Southampton, county, state, federal, and legal nonprofit organization projects are exempt from these fees. Ten, Regulations. After public notice and public hearing, the Commission shall promulgate rules and regulations to effectuate the purposes of this chapter. Notice shall be given at least one week prior to the public hearing by publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the town and by posting with the town clerk. Failure by the Commission to promulgate such rules and regulations or illegal declaration of their invalidity by a court of law shall not act to suspend or invalidate the effect of this chapter. At a minimum, these regulations shall define key terms in this chapter not inconsistent with the bylaw and procedures governing the amount and filing of fees. Eleven, Consultation Peer Review. The Southampton Conservation Commission hereby adopts the following rules in accordance with the authority of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53G. When reviewing an application for or conducting inspections in relation to requests for determination of applicability, RDA, notice of intent, NOI, and abbreviated notice of intent, ANOI, or an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, ANRAD, the Southampton Conservation Commission may determine that the assistance of outside consultants is warranted due to the size, scale, technical, or scientific complexity of a proposed project because of the project’s potential impact on resource areas, or the Southampton Conservation Commission lacks the necessary expertise to perform the work related to the approval and definition of orders of conditions. If the Commission determines that such assistance of outside consultants is warranted, it may require the applicants to pay a project review fee consisting of the reasonable costs incurred by the Commission for the employment of outside consultants engaged by the Commission to insist on the review of a proposed project. In hiring outside consultants, the Commission may engage engineers, planners, lawyers, urban designers, or any other appropriate professional who can assist the Commission in analyzing the project and to ensure compliance with all relevant laws, ordinance, bylaws, and regulations. Such assistance may include—but is not limited to—analyzing an application, monitoring or inspecting a project or site for compliance with Commission’s bylaw or decision, or inspecting a project during construction or implementation. Funds received by the Commission pursuant to these rules shall be deposited with the Town of Southampton’s treasurer—who shall establish a special account for this purpose. Expenditures from this special account may be made at the direction of the Commission without further appropriation. Expenditures from this special account shall be made only for services rendered in connection with a specific project or projects for which a project review fee has been or will be collected from the applicant. Accrued interest may also be spent for this purpose. Failure of an applicant to repay a review fee shall be grounds for denial of the approval of the project. At the completion of the Commission’s review of a project, any excess amount in the account, including interest attributable to a specific project, shall be repaid to the applicant or the applicant’s successor in interest. A final report of said account shall be made available—hold on. I enlarged my screen and suddenly I had larger words than I wanted to deal with. At the completion of the Commissioner’s review of a project, any excess amount in the account, including interest attributable to a specific project, shall be repaid to the applicant or the applicant’s successor in interest. A final report of said account shall be made available to the applicant or applicant’s successor in interest. For the purpose of this rule, any purpose or entity claiming to an applicant’s successor in interest shall provide the Commission with documentation establishing such succession in interest. Any applicant may take an administrative appeal from the selection of the outside consultant to the Select Board. Such appeal must be made in writing and may be taken only within 20 days after the Commission has mailed by first-class mail or hand-delivered notice to the applicant of the selection. The grounds for such an appeal shall be limited to claims that the consultant selected has a conflict of interest or does not possess the minimum required qualifications. The minimum qualifications consist either of an educational degree in or related to the field at issue, or three or more years of practice in the field at issue or a related field. The required time limit for action upon an application by the Commission shall be extended by the duration of the administrative appeal. In the event that no decision is made by the Select Board within one month following —the filing of the appeal, the selection made by the Commission shall stand. Twelve, Enforcement Order, WPA Form 9. No person shall fill, dredge, build upon, degrade, or otherwise alter resource areas protected by this bylaw, or cause, suffer, or allow such activity, or leave in place unauthorized fill, or otherwise fail to restore illegally altered land to its original condition, or fail to comply with a permit or an enforcement order, WPA Form 9, issued pursuant to this bylaw. The filing of a permit application or request for determination of applicability, RDA, shall constitute the consent of the owner and grant the authority for the Commission and its agents with proper identification to enter upon privately-owned land for the purpose of performing their duties under this bylaw. The Commission may make or cause to be made such examinations, surveys, or sampling as the Commission deems reasonable and necessary, subject to the laws of the United States and the Commonwealth. The Commission shall have the authority to enforce the bylaw and permits issued thereunder by violation notices, noncriminal citations under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 2—sorry—21D, administrative orders, and civil and criminal court actions. Any person who violates provisions of this bylaw may be ordered to restore the property to its original condition and/or take other action deemed reasonable and necessary to remedy such violations, or may be fined, or both. Upon request of the Commission, the Select Board may direct a town council to take legal action for enforcement under civil law. Upon request of the Commission, the Chief of Police may take legal action for enforcement under criminal law. Town boards and officers, including any police officer or other officer having police powers, shall have authority to assist the Commission in enforcement. Any person who violates any provisions of this bylaw, permits, or enforcement orders issued thereunder, shall be served with a notice of violation enumerating the alleged violations. If after 10 business days the Commission has not received what it deems to be either (a) sufficient evidence demonstrating that no violations have occurred, or (b) a filing that removed the violation along with evidence that sufficient progress is being made to correct the violation, then the violator shall be punished by a fine per offense—see Southampton Conservation Commission fee schedule for fine amount. Beginning 10 business days after the date of the notice of violation, each day or portion thereof during which a violation continues, or unauthorized fill, or other alteration remains in place, shall constitute a separate offense, and each provision of the bylaw permits—or enforcement orders violated shall constitute a separate offense. In addition to any fine, the town shall be entitled to reimbursement for all expenses, including legal fees incurred in prosecuting said violation, either civilly or criminally. Thirteen, Security.
Let me take it?
Yeah. Thanks.
Thirteen, Security. The intent of this section is to secure against potential of significant environmental damage as part of a permit issued under the bylaw. In addition to any security required by any other town or state board, agency, or official, the Commission may require that the performance and observance of the conditions imposed hereunder, including conditions requiring mitigation work, must be secured wholly or in part by one or more of the methods described below. One, by a proper bond or deposit of money or negotiable securities or other undertaking of financial responsibility sufficient—in the opinion of the Commission—to be released in whole or in part upon issuance of a certificate of compliance for work performed pursuant to the permit. Two, by a conservation restriction, easement, or other covenant enforceable in a court of law executed and duly recorded by the owner of record, running with the land to the benefit of the Town of Southampton and members of the public, whereby the permit conditions shall be performed and observed before any lot may be conveyed other than by mortgage deed. This method shall be used only with the consent of the applicant. The board, the bond, or covenant shall—in the case of the bond—be given to the town, and in the case of a covenant, be recorded in the Registry of Deeds or Land Court at least 10 business days before the start of any work under the permit. Fourteen, Burden of Proof. The applicant for a permit shall have the burden of proving by a preponderance of credible evidence that the work proposed in the permit application will not have unacceptable, significant, or cumulative effect upon the resource area values protected by this bylaw. Failure to provide adequate evidence to the Commission supporting this burden shall be sufficient cause for any—cause for the Commission to deny a permit or grant a permit with conditions. Fifteen, Waivers. Strict compliance with the bylaw may be waived when—in the judgment of the Commission, such action is in the public interest and is consistent with the intent and purpose of the bylaw. Any request for a waiver must be submitted to the Commission in writing and presented at the time of filing along with a written justification stating why a waiver is desired or needed is in the public benefit and is consistent with the intent and purpose of the bylaw. The waiver is intended to be employed only in rare and unusual cases. Sixteen, Appeals. A decision of the Conservation Commission under this bylaw shall be reviewable in Superior Court in accordance with MGL, Chapter 249, Section 4. Seventeen, Severability. The invalidity of any section or provision of this bylaw shall not be invalidated—shall not invalidate any other section or provision or phrase thereof, nor shall it invalidate any permit which previously has been issued. Eighteen, Relation to the Wetlands Protection Act. This bylaw is adopted under the Home Rule Amendment of the Massachusetts Constitution and the Home Rule Statutes, independent of the Wetlands Protection Act, MGL, Chapter 131, Section 40, and the Regulation 310 CMR 10 thereunder. Nineteen, Effective Date. The effective date of the bylaw is the date after the bylaw has been approved by the Attorney General and published by the town clerk, as set forth in MGL, Chapter 40, Section 32. The bylaw shall not, however, apply to: One, any structure or activity lawfully in existence or lawfully begun prior to the Two, any structure or activity which is the subject of a pending notice of intent or request for determination of applicability filed under Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGL, Chapter 131, Section 40, prior to the effective date. Three, any structure or activity which has an order of conditions, order of resource area delineation, or determination of applicability, or other Commission decision filed under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGL, Chapter 131, Section 40, and that is still in effect prior to the effective date. These orders or determinations shall expire at the end of their legally regulated term. These orders or determinations shall expire at the end of their legally regulated term, which is usually three years from date of issuance, after which any new work will be subject to the provision of this bylaw. Four, any structure or activity for which any extensions or modifications or amendments to a current orders of condition or an orders of intent were approved prior to the effective date. These extensions, modifications, and amendments shall remain in effect until the end of their legally regulated term, which is usually three years from the date of issuance, after which any work will be subject to the provisions of the bylaw. Twenty, associate members of the commission. The chairman, with the approval of a majority of the commission, may appoint individuals for the purpose of assisting the commission. Such individuals shall be referred to as associate members, shall be nonvoting members, and shall serve for a term of one year and may be reappointed as deemed appropriate by a majority of the commission or take any action relative thereto.
Thank you very much, Carl Keener. I can see you might have been the go-to parent to read the nursery rhymes to your children and grandchildren. That's what I was thinking about from this all day. Those are the articles. I'm going to continue reading some of my guidelines, which I normally read at the beginning, which won't be read at the upcoming special town meeting, so bear with me a little bit longer. Article nine, I'm sorry. When it's time to speak, just go up to a microphone. You're ready to contribute something new. Approach one of the mics up front. Stand in line to be recognized and turned by the moderator. It'll be one microphone for you and the audience and one microphone for those not wearing a mask. First come, first served. I'll recognize speakers only standing at the mic unless it's a point of order which you can yell from your seat. Address the moderator. State your name, your address, clearly. You'd be wearing a face mask. Please direct your opinions, questions, answers, and address all remarks to me, your town moderator. Do not speak directly to other voters. This is designed to prevent lecturing, bullying, intimidation, and cross-examinations. No salesmanship, no theatrics, no body language, only content, please. Thank you. Town meeting conduct is the moderator's responsibility as authorized by our General Laws, Chapter 37, Subchapters 15 and 17. You will speak up to five minutes at a time, provided you stick to the subject of the motion at hand and address me and not the town meeting audience, and no more than two times on any article except to correct an error or answer a question. Please allow everyone an opportunity to be heard before you request to be heard a second time on an article. Remarks concise, to the point. I will allow anyone who previously spoke to address the meeting a second time with a new point or rebuttal. No repetition, repeat, no repetition. Before you vote yes or no, you individually are free to question, to amend, not encouraging this, and will not discourage this either, and to table or kill any motion, legislate all in a civilized way. No comments of a personal nature, no naming of names to be made by you. There is never any occasion for you to address another in a second person. It will not be permitted. Cross-examinations are out of order. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, lecturing, personal attacks, will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed after their third warning, and that's when I issue everyone a first warning. To be successful, presenters must understand and clearly communicate the details, reasons, and implications of their proposals. Anyone unsatisfied with lack of information for an article may make an motion to adjourn the town meeting to a time certain for the presenter to obtain the necessary information that will certainly be voted on. Answer to your question, simply because someone states something, it does not make it true. A majority leaning towards approving or denying does not make it right by itself. Listen courteously. Vote exactly as you think right. Thank you for your patience and respecting everybody for our upcoming town meeting. There's a whole bit on moving the question, which we're not going to get into today. The moderators' handout, content-neutral handouts we allow are considered background material and must have some relevance to our special town meeting. No literature is to be handed out in a town meeting field. Records are retained for official town meeting business, critical for DOR, bond council, and attorney general. No one has ever been denied to speak at a town meeting I have moderated. There is a concept to move an order of articles if there is a clearly stated and compelling reason to move an article to an earlier position for consideration. That's your choice as the voting public of the legislature. The moderator does require that any handouts be at the town clerk's office in town hall by Wednesday before the special town meeting Saturday, October 17th, at the brief field at 10:00 a.m. It's going to be a great late morning. Please come. Looking forward, this is going out live. This will be picked up later East Hampton meeting in a couple days. The link may be on the town website, so it gives you an opportunity to review whatever you may need to review. So, looking forward. Thank you. See you next time with a brand-new show.